The regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 7:35. Before I ask you all to rise, we are meeting in such a manner due to the COVID outbreak, although we are in Phase Four. The Governor's declarations and Executive Board still exist and allow us to meet in an effective manner as such. And just prior to this meeting, I have confirmed that everybody who is participating can hear me and we can hear them. That having been said, I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask you to call the roll.
Bram. Palmski. Park.
Levin.
Here.
You, please.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy, absent. Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
I'm here. I'm here.
Conquest is here. Yeah, we can hear you.
All right.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
I have 10 present and 2 absent.
10 present, 2 absent? We have a quorum. We are in session. Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Cop for help on this, but then Item 2.1 is proclamation, which I'm happy to provide. And I'm going to ask Troy and Ed to meet me over at the podium. Okay. Troy Van Aken and Ed Mumkis are joining us. I'm going to mute this. Gentlemen, healthy wave from six feet. Good to see you. What am I doing with this, Mike?
You can see yourself at the bottom, the little corner where you guys are.
No, because the speaker's up. Hold on.
There you go. You're going.
I got it? Eh. Okay. Tom's giving me the thumbs up. The rest of the council can give me the thumbs up? All right. Well, the things you do. Am I in camera? That's all right. You are on camera.
Steve, you are. You look great.
Can't remember the last time I heard that. All right, Cop, give me some space. I apologize for, but we all have to endure, right? So, gentlemen, I really appreciate you coming in. We are technically in Phase Four, which allows us to meet in a greater group, but that's not what we're here for and what you're doing here. It, I'm very pleased to provide this proclamation on behalf of, I'm going to continue to speak through unmasked, on behalf of the city of Elmhurst. I have a lot of speeches that I give in my role as mayor, but the speech, you know, 10B, I talk about the jewels in the, and the crown jewels of Elmhurst. And certainly formerly Elmhurst College was one of them. The, the benefits that Elmhurst, formerly Elmhurst College, brings to the city of Elmhurst are measurable, but certainly it brings youth ideas, keeps us up to date. I can go on and on, but I'm going to read one thing in the proclamation, then I'm going to allow you gentlemen to fill in the details for us. So, this is the City of Elmhurst Executive Office proclamation. The university name more accurately reflects Elmhurst educational profile as a comprehensive higher education institution that offers undergraduate and graduate programs to over 3,500 students in liberal arts and applied sciences while anticipating opportunities for new programs and partnerships. Whereas Elmhurst's identity, core values, and emphasis on liberal arts education and real-world professional preparation will remain the same. Whereas the recommendation then was deliberated and endorsed by campus governance groups before going before the Board of Trustees for final approval, and whereas the Board of Trustees approved the new name on June 15, 2019, now therefore I, Steve Morley, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst, do hereby proclaim July 1, 2020, as Elmhurst University Day. Congratulations, gentlemen. I did sanitize before I picked this up. I'm going to hand it back to you. I'm going to step back and why don't you fill us in a little bit about how you folks are doing during this current time and a little bit about the name change? Appreciate you coming.
Well, this is Troy Van Aken, and I'll go first. And I think fittingly, though, the Chair of our Board, who's, you know, been an Elmhurst resident for many decades and has also been an adjunct faculty member, a student and alum of the institution, I think he should probably get the last word. You know, I've been interviewed by a couple newspaper reporters and television reporters recently, and I'll just give you some answers to some questions that they asked me. And one, they asked, you know, what does, what does this mean? What new things are going to be possible? What big changes are coming at Elmhurst University? And the response I've had is that this name change is really as much about what we've become as what we will do in the future. You know, Elmhurst began to offer graduate programs 20 years ago, and we now have over 20 of those. We're exploring some doctoral programs, and the word university is typically a better fit, both domestically and certainly internationally, for the type of institution that has a comprehensive array of undergraduate programs, over 60, as well as graduate programs. The other thing is, is the question that I've been asked a lot is, what does this mean for the community of Elmhurst? And as I've thought about that and even anticipation of being here tonight, I thought about how the community of Elmhurst would have looked in 1871. Of course, none of us were here, but we could go to the History Museum and look at some things. And, you know, Elmhurst College isn't 12 young men coming to be trained to be pastors anymore. It's 3,500 students with about 700 employees. And so, much like the university has grown over that time, I think we've grown with the community of Elmhurst, and I think that's really our intent. I've had the privilege of working in higher ed now for 25-plus years, and what I can tell you is, is that the environment that the students get their education in, not just on campus, but beyond the borders of the campus, is very much, you know, part of the equation in terms of the quality of experience they have. And I've never worked in an environment where it's been so welcoming to the institution. And really, I can't think of a better background for a young person to be able to get their education in. And we have the train station right across from campus. We have several of our students that do internships either here at the city or other community organizations, and I really believe in that. And of course, that would be what somebody ought to say in this venue, shouldn't they? But I can tell you, you know, actions do speak louder than words. And what I can tell you is, my first born graduated from Elmhurst, now Elmhurst University, so I believed it enough to have, you know, that individual who's now in med school, you know, participate in the educational experience. And just this past weekend, I found out that my best friend's two children are likely are, one of them's already put down a deposit, the other one's looking to put down a deposit to come here. And so, that would tell you just a little bit about how much you must believe in, in the community experience that they have here. So, thank you for this recognition, Steve. You've been great ever since I took my first ride around the track with the Elmhurst Classic with your son at that time. And the City Council members and the city staff have been wonderful to work with, and we really appreciate you doing that. And I'll let the Chairman of the Board come in and give the last word.
First, thank you so much. This proclamation is very meaningful. We really, really appreciate it, and it makes us feel like a really integral part of the community. The only thing I would add to the comments that Troy's made really is that realistically, COVID notwithstanding, we're going to continue the kind of personalized one-on-one education that has been our focus really throughout our history. And so, even though we go and expand our programs, and even though we may have to do some things online, everything that we do is going to be focused on individual student needs and individual student education. That's what our faculty does. That's what our faculty wants to do. So, we're going to be battling a little bit through the COVID epidemic here and making that happen. But whichever way we do it, whether our classes are hybrid or whether we'll be able at some point to go back to all in person, that's always going to remain our focus. And so, we really appreciate this recognition. Thank you so much.
Do I have to do anything with this, Mike? Okay. One additional anecdote, though, that I want to share about the college is, I've got three kids in college, and when it's, when it's that time, you travel and you get to visit a lot of schools. And I recently had a neighbor who has a young kid who is considering where to go to college, and they came up to me, they were walking their dog, they actually came up to me. Do you know that we actually have a real college campus right here in Elmhurst? And I think that's something that certainly we don't want Elmhurst University to be the best-kept secret, but also it's a place where I would encourage residents of Elmhurst, if you're going for a walk, walk through the campus. It's a beautiful campus, and it is right in the center of Elmhurst. So, well-deserved, and I think Elmhurst University better reflects what they offer. Also, you heard Troy refer to it. There is a big difference internationally between a college and a university. And I know that one of the things that the college wants to do is attract international students, and a lot of them were overlooking Elmhurst College simply by virtue of the fact that it was listed as a university campus. So, I think it's wonderful, something that's been in the works for over a year, and looking forward to our continued relationship with those folks. Okay, on to Agenda Item 3.1, written communications. At this time, is there anyone in the audience or anybody where you are, Mr. Trosin, that has any written communications they want to submit?
No written communications here.
There's no one here in the audience who is here to submit any written communications, so we're going to go on to Agenda Item 4, public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience or in this COVID situation. We have a way that's spelled out very specifically online about folks who can participate remotely. Mr. Trosin announced at the beginning of this meeting that he had two folks online and one in person. I do not see anybody here in council chambers, so, Mr. Trosin, I am going to, give me one second. So, public forum is an opportunity for anybody to address the City Council and direct their comments specifically to the Chairman, that's me, on any item they so choose. Out of respect for work that we have to get done this evening and respect for others that may want to talk, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, we will ask you to wrap up. That having been said, Mr. Trosin said that we have two folks on the phone. I'm not sure if they can hear me or hear you, Tom, but I would ask them, the first person to go ahead, please identify themselves, and the floor is there.
Okay, I'll go. Lisa Gerhold. I am a member of the Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition. The Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition and the Sierra Club are advocating for the removal of the dam and restoration of Salt Creek at Fullersburg Woods. The master plan for this project was developed by the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group. The plan will improve water quality and recreation on Salt Creek while preserving the historic Grau Mill. This $5 million project will be completed with funds held by the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group and will require no further investment from the community. Currently, the water quality in this area is seriously impacted by the impoundment created by the dam. The dam must be removed in order to allow the river to flow through this area. The Grau Mill and its wheel in a deep pool of water will remain exactly as they currently exist. We encourage residents of Elmhurst and the mayor to voice their approval of this project to the Commissioners of the DuPage Forest Preserve, County Commissioners. To learn more or to register, or to register to participate in a July 7 or July 9 informational webinar about this project, residents can visit www restor salt creek.org. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Trosin, you have one more person remotely?
Yes. Barbara Lannigan.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Lannigan. I'm with Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition. A study published last week in the Nature Communications Journal found a clear increasing trend in the total number of heat wave days within and across regions, and that heat waves were getting longer over the past 70 years. The average number of 90-degree weather days for the Chicagoland area in June is four. This past June, we had nine days, 90-degree heat. We've had six days of 90-degree heat thus far in July, and the forecast calls for nine more days of 90-degree heat in the next two weeks. As temperatures get hotter periods of time, the Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition encourages residents to consider rooftop solar to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels to cool our homes. With current incentives and rebates, now is an ideal time to install solar. In 2015, 10 Elmhurst residents purchased rooftop solar through a program called Solarize Chicagoland. Solarize Chicagoland offered once again this year, and it works by cooling the buying power of residents to make solar affordable. The more residents who contract through the program, the lower the price for all. We encourage the City of Elmhurst to consider backing and promoting this program, as the counties of DuPage, Cook, Kane, and Will have backed the program. This aligns with Focus Area 3, Goal 2, Strategy 4 in the city's sustainability plan. To learn more about the program, the City of Elmhurst and Elmhurst residents can visit elmhurstcoolcities.org or solarizychicagoland.org. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for our online folks, correct, Tom?
Let me check, Mayor. Hi, this is Tom Trosin with the city. Is there anybody else on the public comment line that wishes to speak? That appears everybody online on the phone, Mayor.
Okay, and then I know we have one person who's in person, and I'd ask that person to identify themselves, and they have the floor when ready.
My name is Constantino Noe. I was in the phone meeting last June 1st complaining about the water bill and an incorporated area almost be calling a country hills. It's been injecting $100 charges in this water bill, other than water and sewer. And I request to get an explanation and see clearly if everybody resident in Elmhurst is a business, health club, or any family, they got pools or whatever. I'd like to see if they have this $100 overcharge in this bill. And I'd like to have an answer. I don't know if I come here and speak up, this is the second time. And I look forward to see why is this overcharged in my bill? You guys raised it, and last year, meeting about Elmhurst was complaining about why unincorporated area, they don't pay the rate they pay. So, I cannot clearly understand that. And I heard a comment, this is a comment I heard from my neighbors, they have friends in Elmhurst, they pay water bill combined with the garbage each two months. My bill is every month, once a month, $100 overpay for this bill. And I got to go to the end, I don't know, I need to find out what's going on. I need an answer. This is my second time here, no, this is my, my second time, but last year I was in the meeting. And this is my second time here. I'd like to understand and I see, repeat clearly, these overcharges of $100 in my bill. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Trosin, anybody else over there?
Nobody else, Mayor, in person? Anybody else on the public phone line? That's all, Mayor, here.
Okay, Mr. Trosin, I don't mean to throw you under the bus. I know you're monitoring over there, and we'll do so during our meeting, but I'm certain you can exchange your information with that last gentleman and have a conversation with him. All right, good. On to announcements. Any announcements from the dais, either virtually or here? Anybody raising their hand? Mike, is anybody raising their hand? All right, no announcements, we will move on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any alderman who wishes to pull an item off of the consent agenda to vote no or provide additional comment? Please raise your hand so I can recognize you, either virtually or, Michael Bram. Okay, Michael Bram.
Item 6.14.
I'm sorry, anyone else besides Item 6.14? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 6.14. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, seconded by Alderman Brennan. Clark Malone, please call the vote.
Alderman Bram.
Aye.
Alderman Palmski.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy, absent. Conquest.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
10 ayes and 2 absents.
10 ayes, 2 absents. Motion carries Agenda Id, I'm sorry, consent agenda minus Item 6.14 is approved. On to Item 6.14. This is an ordinance. I would ask Clark Malone to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive orders, executive powers pursuant to 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6.
Okay, if this were council, as for a motion to approve the ordinance as read, most followed by the owner, second Alderman Levin. Go to you, Alderman Bram, you hold this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to speak loudly and briefly. I discussed this last time. I don't believe this executive order is needed any longer at this time. If this executive order was still needed, we as the City Council would be exhausting, or would have and will be exhausting, all other methods at our disposal. As an example of this, if there was a need, we would have met this past fifth Monday, which we did not. We are not exhausting all of our tools and our tool belt if there was anything of any urgency to be executed that could not be done by the full City Council. So, therefore, at this time, I do not think, and I do believe, that this proves to me that this mayoral executive order is not needed at this time, so I will not be supporting this.
Okay, any additional comments? Mike, anybody raising their hand? Seeing none, I'll ask Clark Malone to call the vote.
Bram.
No.
Palmski.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy, absent. Conquest.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
I have nine ayes, one nay, and two absents.
Nine ayes, one nay, which carries Agenda Id 6.1 is approved. On to reports and recommendations. 7.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. Two items have known. One is, as I believe council and the residents are aware, per the Governor, our section of Illinois has moved into Phase Four. If you go on the City of Elmhurst website, there is a little bit of an explanation and a great link to provide more details. As we continue to open up our community, I would encourage all residents to go to our website and follow the links, and it'll give you a very good idea of what Phase Four means in the Restore Illinois Plan. But certainly, health clubs and movie theaters, just to name a few, are open in limited capacity, but there are rules. So, I would request that if you have any questions, please go online and check them out. You can always call City Hall. As always, as our businesses continue to relearn how to open with various restrictions, I would encourage everybody, Elmhurst residents, friends, family alike, please do what you can to support your local businesses. Second part of my report, as council is aware, we had two aldermen retire from their positions for various reasons. Just to remind everybody, my process when I go, when I'm asked to appoint, although I'm not required to by our city code, I make an announcement at a public meeting, I think I actually made two announcements. I also, we also issued a press release from the city regarding anybody who wanted to potentially apply to be an alderman in the first or fourth wards. I call it an open casting call. So, anybody in the first or fourth wards who qualifies can apply. And to date, I have considered everybody who has submitted an application. I have interviewed with every single person who submitted an application within the deadlines that we established. And immediately following this meeting, or tomorrow morning, depending on if I can get one phone call in, I will be sending my recommendations to the City Council members. So, I appreciate your patience, but assuming all goes well, we will be swearing in two new aldermen on the 20th, so two weeks from tonight. And that's it for me. Assistant City Manager Cop, anything to report?
No report.
Anyone else for reports? Anybody raising their hand, Mr. Cop? Okay, seeing none, we will go on. Bob Dunn, Alderman, oh, there he is, he's even in the room with me. Alderman Dunn, you have a report.
Sorry, I was a little slow on the draw there. Just a update for ONCC, we, the Fly Quiet Committee, had a meeting about two weeks ago. Prior to that, we were asked to meet with the CDA individually to give some recommendations or ask questions or clarifications to the initial rotation plan that was proposed, a 12-week rotation plan alternating north, south, diagonal, east and west.
One is, as I believe council and the residents are aware, per the governor, our section of Illinois has moved into Phase 4. If you go on the City of Elmhurst website, there is a little bit of an explanation and a great link to provide more details. As we continue to open up our community, I would encourage all residents to go to our website and follow the links, and it'll give you a very good idea of what Phase 4 means in the Restore Illinois Plan. But certainly, health clubs and movie theaters, just to name a few, are open in limited capacity, but there are rules. So I would request that if you have any questions, please go online and check them out. You can always call City Hall. As always, as our businesses continue to relearn how to open with various restrictions, I would encourage everybody, Elmhurst residents, friends, family alike, please do what you can to support your local businesses. Second part of my report, as council is aware, we had two aldermen retire from their positions for various reasons. Just to remind everybody, my process when I'm asked to appoint, although I'm not required to by our city code, I make an announcement at a public meeting. I think I actually made two announcements. I also, we also issued a press release from the city regarding anybody who wanted to potentially apply to be an alderman in the first or fourth wards. I call it an open casting call. So anybody in the first or fourth wards who qualifies can apply. And to date, I have considered everybody who has submitted an application. I have interviewed with every single person who submitted an application within the deadlines that we established. And immediately following this meeting, or tomorrow morning, depending on if I can get one phone call in, I will be sending my recommendations to the city council members. So I appreciate your patience, but assuming all goes well, we will be swearing in two new aldermen on the 20th, so two weeks from tonight. And that's it for me. Assistant City Manager, Cop, anything to report?
No report.
Anyone else for reports? Anybody raising their hand, Mr. Cop? Okay, seeing none, we will go on. Bob Dunn. Alderman, oh, there he is. He's even in the room with me. Alderman Dunn, you have a report.
Sorry, I was a little slow on the draw there. Just a update for ONCC. We, the Fly Quiet Committee, had a meeting about two weeks ago. Prior to that, we were asked to meet with the CDA individually to give some recommendations or ask questions or clarifications to the initial rotation plan that was proposed, a 12-week rotation plan alternating north-south diagonal, east and west for 12 weeks. So we were able to meet prior to the meeting with the CDA and gave our input. And we had a meeting, as I said, about two weeks ago to discuss it. And I think that rotation has been fairly well-accepted in general by the committee, but we'll continue to vet that, and there'll be tweaks made to it. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to go on to other business. Any other business? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out to my fellow council members, I had reviewed written communications earlier in the day. For some reason, there are significantly more items on that part of our website. So I encourage everybody to go out and take a look at, for whatever reason, there were double the number that are out there now than what I reviewed. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other business? Seeing none, I'm going to go on to Agenda Item 9, this is your resolution. I'd ask Clerk Malone to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of Change Order Number 1 for the 2020 Sanitary Manhole Rehabilitation Project, Project 20-13.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman Deuter, do you want to add?
Thanks, Mayor. Not much to add, just that this is the resolution following up on a report that we received, that we approved on the Consent Agenda, and we waived the rules to, am I the only one echoing, or are they all echoing? Waived the rules to be able to approve the resolution tonight as well.
Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Malone to call the vote.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo absent. Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy absent. Conquest.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
I have 10 ayes, 0 nays, and 2 absents.
10 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Clerk Malone, please call the vote.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy absent.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
I have 10 ayes and 2 absents.
10 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries, we adjourn. Thank you, everybody.